All right, 6:30, we're gonna call the meeting of the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board to order. Let's see, and we're gonna start with roll call.
Dan Foyle.
Here.
John Lloyd.
Here.
Kelly Rast, present. Ken Klingensmith is on Zoom.
President.
Thank you. Fred Winger. Dennis Boland.
President.
And Emily Coleman.
Present.
We have a quorum of seven.
Thank you, and will somebody read the statement for the hybrid meeting?
Yes, that'll be me. This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. This meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble, please call 913-715-1700. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click Raise Hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing *9. Please do not utilize the raised hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments, and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a 10 seconds remaining warning sound. For board members and presenters, please, please state your name every time you begin talking so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sheri. Okay, agenda items. Item A, delete, revise, and approve the agenda. Note that Agenda Item, the under Business before the Board, that item is gonna be deleted. The applicant has withdrawn the application at this time. Sean, you wanna add?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, Sean Penley County Planning Staff. The applicant for application SE21-181-CUP has requested to withdraw this application. Staff just received this notice this afternoon. The applicant is withdrawing this application from consideration at this time. The statement they provided, they intend to withdraw the application from further consideration at this time. And the applicant does intend to reevaluate its options at a later date. They will advise staff if and when they will be ready to resubmit a new application. So that was just received this afternoon. Staff provided an update on our zoning board website online. We'll continue to monitor that, and we'll ask the applicant if there's any update to the application, which time if there is a new application that will require a whole new public hearing and public notice to be sent out. So this, for all intents and purposes, this application is no longer valid.
And to be clear, that's the better baseball. If anybody's here for that, you don't have to stand in this heat.
Correct, correct. Better, better ballgame application is what this, the CUP application is for.
Okay.
And we also, the staff provided notice to some of the properties that we knew or surrounding neighbors that were requesting to speak in this. So hopefully, most people are aware of that, but again, happy to answer any questions. It sounds like Mr. Klingensmith.
Yep. Hey, this is Ken Klingensmith. I just had a question related to the fact that he's operating a commercial business, and we've deferred it, he's delayed it, but he's not ceasing to stop what he's doing related to trafficking games and visibly operating as he wants to and delaying, you know, and delaying a decision one way or another. Is there something that staff or that can be done to kind of say, that's great, but cease and desist doing what you're doing until you get the conditional use permit?
Sean Penley, Planning Staff. We are aware of the complaints we've received from neighbors regarding this application. This is something that we will have to respond to, any complaints received. So if the owner and applicant does continue to operate the facility in a way that would be, and this property is in violation of any county regulations, we would have to respond to that with enforcement action. So that's something that we're aware of. We have notified the owner and applicant of that situation. So if we do receive complaints, we'll have to act on that for enforcement that would require compliance. There is still the option, again, that the applicant could request and submit for a new CUP application. It could be modified, but as it is now, they would not be allowed to conduct any team practices on the property in the manner that they previously proposed. There may be, you know, there is an existing field there. So the applicant could theoretically have something there with his own family and own private use of a residential and rural property. But for the proposal as submitted, the applicant would not be allowed to conduct practices, team practices regularly scheduled on the property as proposed. So some of that staff will have to respond to on an individual basis for as we receive any complaints.
Thank you for your response.
Yeah, thank you, Ken. Thank you, Sean. Just to be clear, so if that is, if that issue comes up, that's a, that's a code reinforcement issue. That's not. Business here.
That's correct. At this time, if we receive any complaints, that would be a matter for zoning enforcement by county planning staff and that we would respond to that as we receive those complaints. At some point, there's a process for remediation or mitigation of a violation. Again, at some point, it could be an application that's filed that would come back to the board, but for any individual complaint that's received for enforcement, that's a staff administered function until we get to a point where there's any further violations.
Kelly Rast, where do you find the policy and procedures for violations and grievance remediation? Or any of that stuff? Is that? Because I know, me being on the planning commission, that is one of my number one objectives is to make sure all of that. You're making it sound, making sure that we have that, because that comes up time and a time again with the zoning, when people are like, well, what do we do if it's not being followed? So where is this information, you know, is, do we have something in place?
Sean Penley, Planning Staff. I am not aware of official grievance policies that are a part of any online provision. However, the zoning regulations do have specific responses for and violations, zoning enforcement violations.
So if somebody makes a complaint, what transpires? I mean, and how quickly, what's the timeframe? I mean, are there any guidelines?
Sean Penley, Planning Staff. I think this is something that maybe to get into more detail of the response, it'd be something that staff could provide a separate update to the board to answer that. That, this is, could get deep, but basically, the process is, as staff receives complaints regarding any potential zoning violations, the process is for our zoning enforcement officer, Bob Mason is actually here, I believe, this evening. Bob is, will respond, contact the property owner, inspect the site, make contact with the owner to notify them of the situation. It's something that is a process that we have to conduct. We have to inspect the site, see what's going on, have a conversation with the owner. If the owner is not bringing the property into compliance, we know of continued violations, the process is a notice of violation is sent by certified mail to the property owner. We go through a process. Hopefully, the owner brings the property into compliance. If they don't, ultimately, it could be something that could go either to codes court or could result in an application that is brought to the zoning board or BOC. It all depends on what the specific violation is. So there's a variety of different things. But again, if there's any complaints, we just encourage any properties to contact planning staff so that we can investigate the potential violation and respond.
Sean, Ken Klingensmith here. Is that part, is that part of the code enforcement officers? I think the county has like three of them? Or does the planning department have its own set of code enforcement officers?
Planning Department has one part-time zoning enforcement officer. So our zoning enforcement works part-time, and that's the only inspection and zoning enforcement officer the county has for the unincorporated area.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Sorry, didn't mean to get off track there. So any other additions, deletions, revisions on the agenda? Need a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Dan Foyle, I would so move.
Emily Coleman, I second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So the revised agenda is approved. Disclosure of conflicts of interest? Disclosure of external contacts or discussions? Okay, looking good. Okay, approval of minutes from the May 4 meeting.
This is Ken Klingensmith. I reviewed the minutes of the prior meeting and find them reflective of what occurred. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of the minutes from the May 4 meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed? Right, the minutes are approved from the May 4 meeting. Board reports, Board of County Commissioners' actions.
Thank you, Chairman, Sean Penley, Planning Staff. I will note both the Board of County Commissioners' actions and Planning Commissioner's actions in one update. The Board of County Commissioners will hold a special meeting next Monday, June 6th, at 2:00 PM in this room regarding amendments to the comprehensive plan and zoning regulations for utility scale solar facilities. And if you're aware, for the past year, staff has been working on updated regulations for utility scale solar facilities. The Planning Commission has also considered these at length. And at the most recent meeting for the Planning Commission, there was a special meeting on May 10th. The Planning Commission did consider a remand of BOC directives for certain development standards regarding these regulations. The Planning Commission completed their recommendations and have submitted those to the BOC, and that will be considered at the special meeting next Monday. So we have all of those recommendations ready. There will be a presentation by staff and then responses from the BOC with the intent and hope that the regulations will be adopted. So next Monday will be the potential, hopefully, the final hearing for the regulations for utility scale solar facilities.
Excuse me, Sean, I have a question. Kelly Rast, is that also public comments? Will there be public comments at that meeting?
There will be public comments allowed at that meeting. That's correct. So although the public hearing, you know, is effectively done at the time of planning, the BOC does allow public comments, and they will allow public comments at that meeting next Monday, yes.
What was, I thought it was supposed to be held at the Embassy Suites. So can you educate me why it was changed or?
Decision was made the week, I believe, either the week of or the week after the planning commission meeting, there was a consideration that the meeting may be held at the Embassy Suites Conference Center. However, the decision was made that this, the meeting would be here, just as we did with the planning commission meeting on May 10th. This, this room was, I think the, the understanding was this room was large enough to accommodate all the people who would be wanting to show up in person. We also do have the option, as we do with the planning commission, for that to be a virtual attendance. So anybody can participate on Zoom. So we will have that as a public, a virtual, a hybrid meeting, essentially in-person and virtual attendance. So I think that was the reason why, that that was a decision made, you know, administration level for that.
Who made the decision?
That is a county managers and the county, the board decision. I don't know who made the decision. This is just a direction. I know that the meeting is being held here in this board hearing room. And it's, all of the information that we have online does specify that the meeting will be held at this.
Yeah, we don't know who made that decision. Because I just feel like there may be a lot of people that show up, this Kelly Rast, show up at this meeting based on what took place at the second meeting to make sure that they can be heard, whatever. So it just seems like it's not as friendly for any of the citizens to be heard and seen as well. I mean, heard, yes, Zoom, maybe someplace else, but they're not, you know, the capacity is not going to facilitate if a lot of people show up, so I was just curious.
Planning, planning staff does not set the meeting location for board.
No, I know that. I was just curious, who, how do you, nobody knows who changed it?
I don't know that, nobody knows. I don't know. I don't know who made the decision. All I know is that the decision is that the meeting at this time, from what we understand, the meeting is being held in this room.
Yes, I got that.
If there is any change, as with anything that we have, is if there's any changes, we encourage everyone to check online for any updates.
Chairman. Jay Leipzig, if I can just take a couple of words, just responding to Commissioner Rast. Commissioner, the, just to concur with what Sean had just said, planning staff doesn't make that decision. It's, it's a decision that is made by the county manager's office and the chairman. So had made the decision of moving that location. I can't offer anything more than that. I just, I, I don't know. Just was made a decision because of the convenience of the public and for the crowd, potential crowd, of having the meeting here in this building.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on, on planning and?
I know that completes our board reports that mentioned the planning commission that their last meeting was May 10th. So really, that concludes their recommendation this time. There was no regular meeting in April, or excuse me, in May. However, there will be the next meeting coming up here in June. We will have a regular meeting for the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Stillwell Community Plan, Ken?
This is Ken. This is Ken Klingensmith. I appreciate keeping it on the agenda each month, but we do not have an update report this month.
Okay, thank you. Right, with that, we're gonna move on to Business Before the Board. Item A, application number SE22210CUP, conditional use permit, 199th Street and Metcalf Avenue, Jeff Hoag Concrete Properties LLC applicant and land owner.
Good evening, Michelle Lonergar, Planning Staff. This application is for a conditional use permit for a contractor shop in an outdoor storage yard. This aerial shows the location of the subject property. It's just south of 199th Street and east of Metcalf Avenue. Here is aerial showing the zoning of the subject properties along the subject property in addition to other properties right along the east side of Metcalf Avenue. Are all zone PRB2, which is a neighborhood retail business district. As you can see, there's some vacant areas, minimal development in this portion of it. To the east of the subject property is residential zoning and development. And then to the west is rural zoning, which remains undeveloped. Now, this is a little hard to see. Don't need to see the details, but this is an overlay of the site plan on the site, just so you can see kind of the relation between what exists there today and what the site would look like laid out. And here is. Is there any way you can hide that top toolbar? This is the site plan for the property. Hold on just a second, sorry. There you go. Metcalf is on your left, so it's oriented as a property is. Just to highlight some of the details on the site plan. Not going. There we go. The blue square is the building. It's a 6,000 square foot building, and there's a porch on the front that is outside of that square. This green area is the outdoor storage area. Well, and the orange square, which is the outline of the fenced-in area. The green area is the storage area, which is specifically delineated at least 50 foot setback from the property lines as required by the regulation. The northern line, which is right here, will, there'll be a, installed a three-foot pipe rail fence so that the outdoor storage area is specifically outlined. No storage beyond that area, otherwise you get into that 50-foot setback. And then north of that is proposed parking for work trucks and a drive aisle, which allows circulation completely around the site. The orange area, which is a fence, is a six-foot fence, chain link fence with slats. And then, I didn't highlight these, but you can see the circles all around the outside of the fence to the east, north, and south. Those are evergreen trees, and those will help with any noise and buffering to the residential to the east. And then the purple square is the required parking, which is met. Here is just the front elevation of the building. Here you can see that front porch and overhead door. Here is the proposed lighting. The images on the left are provided from the cut sheets. Image on the right just shows the location of those proposed lighting, which is 10 wall packs. These do not meet the requirement for downward directional or full cutoff lighting, with lighting being a potential issue with residential directly to the east. Excuse me. Step has identified revising the type of lighting on the outside of the building as a stipulation. Step does recommend approval of the CUP for a contractor shop. No. Excuse me. Outdoor storage yard on the subject property, subject to stipulations. Here's just a highlight of some of the stipulations. For a 10-year term, stipulation to revise exterior lighting, provide a lighting plan. We want to make sure that lighting is not going off the property to the extent beyond what it should and what's outlined in the code. The outdoor storage will be only within the identified area. That was the area that was identified in green on that site plan. And the storage area surface shall be a dustless surface. We want to make sure that we don't have a lot of dust traveling off-site. There's a variety of different ways that this can be achieved and that being in quotes, dustless surface. There's a definition in the code that spells out what that means for options. And then there's a easement needed for the stormwater drainage to go across the property to the south. Here is a motion that you can use if you see fit. The applicants are here if you have any questions, or I can answer any questions also.
Thank you, Michelle. Questions for staff from the zoning board?
This is Ken Klingensmith. What was the, what was the reasoning for Overland Park to weigh in on this application?
They are within our notification area. It's usually the area that's on their, within their future land use plan.
I sure wish they would give us the same courtesy with their island annexations on the east side of the county and allow us to provide input on what we think they should be doing. Just a comment.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay, any more questions for staff?
I would, this is Ken again. I do want to, somewhere within this approval or recommendation, the staff report to ensure that the exterior lighting does comply with the lighting standards for Stillwell. I see that's outlined on page nine and recommended, but I do want to have that in there that it will not be inconsistent with the lane standards for Stillwell.
Okay. Right. Applicant, or anything else, Michelle, any other questions? Applicant?
Thank you, commissioners. My name's Judd Clausen with Phelps Engineering, address 1270 North Winchester, L.A., Kansas, for the record. Appearing here on behalf of Concrete Properties LLC. My client, Jeff Hoag, and Lance, and Tablight, the contractor, here as well to answer any questions. They're in agreement with the stipulations, including revising the lighting plan. That won't be a problem. Apologize for that oversight and again, happy to be here in front of you tonight.
Right, thank you, Judd. Any questions for the engineers or the contractors or the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from the applicant in terms of what they intend to do with the property.
Okay.
Would like to come on up? Just describe how you're gonna use the building and property.
We're gonna use the building to have our equipment inside and now just out in the gravel.
Okay.
We are gonna put Jeff Hoag. And we are gonna put pines all the way around the fence. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions?
Thank you. Is there a minimum height for the trees that go around or anything? I only ask this because I was part of a deal where somebody said they were putting up some trees to block the view or whatever, something that was done, and they put in 18-inch tall cedars. They put the right number of cedars in, but they were 18 inches tall, so.
I'll let Sean or Michelle talk about, you know, required heights, but the evergreen trees that are being shown around the northeast and south side of the property there are specified out at six-foot height on planting.
Thank you. Is, I didn't see septic called out on the plant. Is it on the septic system then as well, or?
This is on a holding tank, just like all the other properties out here. This long range is, sewers won't be here for years. So many of the properties out here are on holding tanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Time for public comments. If we have any, remember to state your name and address in the live room here. It's getting cooler by the minute. Okay. Anybody on Zoom? Okay, doesn't look like any public comments. Any further questions by the board, for staff, applicant, public? Right, we're gonna close the comments discussion of the application by the zoning board. I like it. Looks like a nice building, fits with everybody else out there. About half of us that live out there are contractors, so it'll fit right in.
This is Ken. Good.
All right, Dan Foyle, I move to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for a contractor shop and outdoor storage for lot 13 Coventry Estates, third plat, with stipulations and for the reasons outlined in the staff report.
Hold on, hold on to that thought for one minute, Dan. Ken had some more comments.
No, I was just gonna comment. Dan, if you just add to the recommendation to include the Stillwell Community Plan's lighting standards for Stillwell as part of that, I'd be in favor. I think it's a big use of property inconsistent with what's around the neighborhood or what's around that property.
Anybody else want to comment before we revisit Dan's motion?
Mrs. Chairman, Fred Winger, it's second.
We're gonna back up one second. I'm gonna make Dan, Dan redo his motion with the added stipulation about the Stillwell compliant lighting.
Dan Foyle, I move to recommend approval of conditional use permit for a contractor shop and outdoor storage for lot 13 Coventry Estates, third plat, with stipulations. Uh, Dan Foil, I move to recommend approval of conditional use permit for contractor shop and outdoor storage for lot thirteen Coventry Estates, third plat with stipulations. And for the reasons outlined in the staff report as well as compliance with the Stillwell community lighting. Requirements. Fred Winger, second.
Now we have a motion in a second, all in favor of recommendations, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so this is gonna be recommended by the zoning board up to the Board of County Commissioners and that will be when?
Um, we actually had a little revision, um, the B O C C has um, a couple of weeks off in July. Um, based on the sheet, it says that we would kind of bump that back um, a couple of weeks. Um, we have decided that we're going to have these items go um, before the B O C C at their June thirtieth meeting. Um, that way the applicants aren't waiting so long for the applications to be um, dealt with at the county level. Um, this meeting will be at nine thirty here in uh. This room, the committee, the administration building, eleven South Cherry Street, Nolatha. And make sure you check the website prior to the meeting for any information.
Right, thank you everybody, thank you Michelle, thank you guys, the applicant and team, thanks for coming. Okay. Item B. Application number S E two 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 one one R E Z rezoning, two hundred and first admission. An application number S E two 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 one two P D P preliminary development plan. At two hundred and first admission road, the staff is recommending a continuance for this item to the July sixth meeting. And we need a motion for that.
Uh, Dan Foil, I move to uh, continue application number S E twenty two dash two eleven R E Z rezoning to our first. Admission road application, number S E twenty two dash two one two P D P preliminary development plan, two hundred first admission road to the July sixth meeting.
Emily Coleman, second.
Right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor of continuing agenda item or business for the board, item B. Say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, very good, so we'll look forward to doing that next month. Item C, application number S E two 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 one four R E Z rezoning. One eight eight nine three Null Avenue and application number S E two 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 one five. P P F P preliminary and final plat, one eight eight nine three Null Avenue. Domino acquisitions applicant and land owner, are y'all here? Applicant here? Oh, all right, thanks. Right, with that, let her rip.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Michelle Cricks, Johnson County Planning. And the, this is case numbers S E two 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 one four R E Z A U and S E two 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 one five P P F P. Uh, rezoning preliminary plat and final plat for the Estates of Shadow Woods located northeast of one hundred nineteenth street and Null Avenue. Uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property approximately forty acres of land. From the rural district to the planned rural district and create a five lot residential subdivision to be known as Estates of a Shadow. Estates of Shadow Woods. The subject property is located north of one hundred ninety first street along the east side of Null Avenue. As you can see here, the subject property is highlighted on the screen in front of you. And is nestled between the main part of city of Overland Park and the Overland Park Island there. Um, and just south of Camp Branch Creek along, or excuse me, Camp Branch Park. And just uh, located then along Camp Branch Creek. The subject property is generally characterized as unimproved, used for agricultural purposes. The topography slopes uh, from both the north and south um, to the middle of the property. Where wa- water runoff is collected and conveyed to the east into Camp Branch Creek along the eastern boundary of the subject property. The east end of the property is located within the one hundred year floodplain associated with the creek. And vegetation within that floodplain is characterized as dense mature, mature trees. Uh, to the north and south of the subject property is large residential lots graded on thirty acres in size. East of the subject property um, are the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. And smaller residential lots in the Mission Trail subdivision. To the west across Null um, Avenue is land owned by Kansas City Power and Light. That property does hold two zoning designations and has a large electrical substation constructed sometime before nineteen eighty six. According to um, historical aerial imagery. On the screen in front of you is just a couple of pictures of the subject property. Um, that top picture there shows the general slope from the north and south as you can see, and it kind of creates a small valley. Um, in the middle of the property where water is collected and then is conveyed to the east towards the, the creek. Uh, the, the picture on the bottom there is almost a straight on picture from Null Avenue where you can see. Uh, just kind of the general kind of more pastoral um, uh, look of the property currently that's used for um, hay cultivation currently. Uh, here's a copy of the uh, proposed preliminary plat for the development layout. Five lots are proposed, ranging in lot sizes of four acres to just over ten. A new interior publicly dedicated street is proposed with this request. And the road to be uh, twenty feet, twenty six feet wide and paved uh, with ditches for storm, stormwater drainage. Uh, seventy feet of total right of way is proposed for that local street. And also the applicant is proposing to dedicate sixty feet of right of way from the center line of Null Avenue. The comprehensive arterial road network plan or carnip designates Null Avenue as a type one arterial. And per the infrastructure requirements, direct access onto Null from lots in the P R U R planned rural district is prohibited. Therefore, the applicant is depicting limits of no access for lots one and five along Null Avenue. The applicant is also showing a right of way connection to the lot north of the subject property. This is for a potential connection, should that lot ever be divided and developed sometime in the future. At this time, a road would not go all the way to that property line. The applicant is actually showing a temporary turnaround, so there's no uh, road going directly all the way to that north property line. Per article nine of the regulations, lots in the P R U R district are uh, not to have a density exceeding one lot per ten acres. Plus one bonus lot for every thirty acres with a meant there and with that bonus lot, then you're, they were able to have a minimum nominal lot area of four acres. For this application, the P R U R zoning designation would allow five lots on forty acres in this development. It is staff's opinion, the request would support the low density, single family residential development typical for this area. The planned rural district is intended to provide for single family areas and rural uses that one. Maintain or enhance the rural character of an area, two are sensitive to the physical characteristics of the sites. Three, protect the natural resources areas, four, place new permanent single family dwellings on smaller lots. That are in residential groupings to realize the greater um, economic of the area. And five, to minimize the negative impacts on existing roads and the infrastructure in the area. Permitted uses in the R U R include single family residential, railroad right of way, accessory buildings and uses customarily incidental to single family residential. Any supplementary uses and passive open space or nature preserves, arboretums and parks. Surrounding properties in the um, are typically are zoned like rural district, residential neighbor one, which is that R N one. Uh, zoning designated on the screen in front of you. Land west of the subject property is that is currently owned by K C P and L, is owned a mix of R U R and planned research. Development and light industrial park, that P E C three, which is at the small purple area. And that is actually the location of the electrical substation. So on the screen in front of you just highlights the area plan from the rural comprehensive plan. The subject property is highlighted by the uh, black uh, star there, just kind of shows that this is actually within the area plan. Just outside of the Stillwell um, community area. And uh, within the Blue Valley area plan, we've highlighted the subject property which shows that part of the property is within the rural policy area. And part of that is within the parks, recreation, open space, which is um, tied to that floodplain along Camp Branch Creek. Uh, per, per the regulations, this development is subject to minimum wastewater infrastructure requirements. In accordance with the county's policies for wastewater management and the environmental sanitary code. Since the development has lots less than seven acres in size and is located in the rural policy area designated. And the rural comprehensive plan, a developer would be required to provide sewers when located less than one thousand three hundred and twenty feet from a sewer district. Or provide dry, low pressure sewers. The chief engineer of Johnson County wastewater reviewed the development proposal. And determined it was unlikely or unreasonable to expect sanitary sewer service would be available to this development within the next fifteen years. Additionally, dry sewers, when installed for a period of more than fifteen years, tend to break down and lose the ability to function properly. Due to the low density of the proposed subdivision, the future residents would not be endangered using onsite septic. An onsite septic system without the installation of dry sewers. And the lack of dry sewers would not pose a threat to the health, safety or general welfare of nearby properties or the community at large. And staff is recommending approval of the requested waiver to use onsite septic systems without the installation of a dry sewer. Here in front of you is a copy of the proposed final plat. Uh, the applicant has already included notes on the plat um, to address the park dedication amount. The dry sewer waiver and restricted access um, onto Null Avenue from lots one and five. The city of Overland Park did provide comments uh, to this project, which is provided in your packet and made part of the public record. I would also like to note that uh, per Johnson County Public Works memo attached to the staff report. The applicant provided a plan demonstrating each lot within the subdivision would have adequate access. And would meet the minimum site distance requirements, uh, this plan has been reviewed and accepted by Public Works. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning of forty acres from the rural district to the planned rural district. A preliminary plat including a minimum infrastructure waiver to not install dry sewers. And a final plat for five residential lots located northeast of one hundred ninety first street and Null Avenue to be known as the Estates of Shadow Woods. And I have provided a recommended motion if you choose to use that, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Questions? For staff from the zoning board?
This is Kelly Rast, I have one question, will the, be any requirements to put up any kind of fencing or structure to? Keep potential children off the railroads or from those lots or whatever, because on the railroad tracks right at the outskirts of the property?
There is nothing in the code that would require any sort of um, fencing or barrier buffer. Um, that is a pretty significant um. Floodplain and vegetation, as my understanding from the applicant. That they're gonna, you know, try to maintain as much of those trees as possible and it would be up to the property owners to put up fencing.
Okay, thank you.
This is a fairly good chance of being in a floodplain, correct?
That's correct.
Oh, uh, from what I see here, lot three would be. Uh, a good chance of being in uh, in a floodplain area.
So I provided for you a uh, it's just a depiction here that shows not only the floodplain in pink. But also highlights the stream setback that the uh, that development would have to adhere to. Um, the applicant and their engineer did take a look at this property to ensure that lot three was buildable and able to handle septic. Safely without encroaching into the floodplain or to the stream setback, so they, they did provide that and they did conduct that analysis. And they actually, from their initial proposal, bumped the um, the lot area to the north a little bit. To ensure that there was enough buildable area to not encroach into the floodplain.
Yeah, I just don't want the county to get into the situation they got into about twenty years ago and having to buy a bunch of houses that uh. Or in a floodplain and, and. And uh. Reliable for that. Okay.
Yep.
Other questions of the staff?
Uh, Dan Foil, so to the east of this then is the railroad tracks, so really that subdivision. On the east side of it, they won't see any of this property or anything like that, it's really the, the property to the north. That it looks like there's not that far between that house to the north and. Uh, and then the south of there, I don't, I'd like to see what the setback, how far that is and how that would affect them. And is there any plan to do any kind of screening or anything like that as well?
Well, any screening that would be along that north property line would be the responsibility of that property owner to put that screening in to. Install and maintain it. Um, the only way that we would be able to have any screening there is to somehow uh, require a landscape easement. And they would have to probably put some sort of uh, funding in place to be able to maintain it.
This is Sean Pendley, planning staff, um, for these uh, zoning for uh, R U R properties. Uh, screening is not required from one R U R to another residential.
Thank you, Sean. Right, any more questions? For staff?
Yeah, this is Ken Klingensmith. Ken Klingensmith here, John Chairman.
Yeah. Yeah, Ken.
What other uses, what other uses would exist in a P R U R? I know we talked about there's supplementary uses and home occupations, I didn't know what business aspects would exist there.
So I've been, I've flipped back to the slide here that shows all the approved uses in the P R U R district. So it's single family, the residential, accessory buildings and other accessory uses that would be customarily incidental to single family. Uh, as we're, as outlined in article eighteen, uh, supplemental uses as are per article sixteen and passive open space.
Thank you, this, the slide deck doesn't show on the um, Zoom meeting, so I appreciate you taking the time to pull that up.
My pleasure, thank you, it's also uh, listed within your staff report. And I believe it is on, if you give me just a quick moment, I can pull it up on page nine of your staff report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I'll also add to uh, Mr. Klingensmith's questions, the um, as uh, Michelle indicated, there are supplementary uses that are allowed by article sixteen. That could include home occupations, that could be allowed, but those are restricted to what are allowed by zoning regulations, so. Those would be the only other supplemental uses as, as pointed out there in the staff report.
Okay.
This is Fred. Go ahead, Ken.
No, I just had one final follow up to that. In our hierarchy of zonings, this is the, I want to say the lowest level, but this is the closest to the rural that is there now, right? There's not something in between this and what it is today that might be more applicable?
That's correct, uh, this is um, the rural district obviously being the least intense, intense use with uh, in our zoning regulations. The planned rural is the next least intense use, it's the rural district, just more of a planned use.
Thank you for that.
This is Fred Winger, Michelle, could you bring up the plat again that you were showing on the PowerPoint or whoever's running?
Would you like the preliminary or the final plat?
Oh, that's my question, so we were sent the preliminary and I know it's a final that was, okay. Is, is there a difference between the preliminary that we were sent and the final?
No, the final plat should be in your staff report also.
Second page, okay.
It's just on the back of the preliminary plat.
And between the two plats, are there any difference?
No, they're, they're identical.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for this uh, staff at this time?
Was there any comment, Fred Winger here, was there any comments from adjacent landowners?
No, staff has not received any public comment, I did go out and do a onsite visit. And I did have a conversation with the property owner to the north. And we sat there, we looked at the plat, just kind of discussed it, but he, I don't believe he had, trying to remember, because it's been a few weeks. Don't believe he had really any concerns.
Thank you.
All right, uh, time to hear from the applicant. If you guys would like to come up and remember to state your name and address, please.
Yes, Michael B. Hoffer for Domino acquisitions, one four seven one seven Juniper Street, Leewood, Kansas, six six two two four. I'd like to thank committee for allowing me to come and answer any questions.
Anything else you want to add?
Sorry, I uh, we accept all the stipulations uh, outlined by the staff. Sorry, I, we accept all the stipulations outlined by the staff and planning department.
Perfect. All right. Questions for the applicant?
Is there a, you know, I mean, I won't call it HOA, but is there some requirements to the home sizes? What are the ballpark price?
Ballpark will have as minimum home size, it's probably going to be around five thousand heated square feet.
Other questions for the applicant? All right, I don't see other questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open up for public comments at this time. Anyone in the room that would like to speak? Yeah, sure. Step on up and name an address, please.
Tim Hickock, one eight six zero one Knoll. It's two doors north of the subject property. I read in the, I, I'm here to speak against the approval of this. I, I read, I read in the staff's comments that it's in keeping with the neighborhood. The character of the neighborhood. It's only in keeping with the character of the neighborhood if you're looking at Google Earth. With respect to what you were saying about the floodplain. You'd have to, you almost have to have climbing equipment to get down to that creek. So it's not going to flood any houses. That and beyond the railroad is a subdivision, but it's not really part of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is, is Knoll. It's KCPNL. It's Jim. It's me. The, the lot sizes across the street from KCPNL are forty acres. The subject property forty acres. Jim Shalfont, to the direct north, he's got sixty. And I've got thirty. The neighbor to the north of me has, has sixty. We moved out here because we don't want, we don't want subdivisions. And. If they had come in, if they'd come in with. Just split it in half and have a couple of driveways that come out to Knoll like it is now, I don't think I'd be speaking in opposition. Five lots is too many. It doesn't look like the neighborhood. And I strongly recommend that you deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Shalfont. I live, I have the property just to the north of this applicant. And if this gets approved, my two biggest concerns is one, the tangent road they have going to the north. I don't know why that is even in the plan. I would prefer that they not approve that. Because for two reasons. One, it kind of would predetermine how my property would be developed down the road, would it not? And secondly. You know, I, well, that's, my other point was. Which I, I don't know if I can do anything about it, is that there's a pretty good chance. I'm going to be looking at the back of somebody's house. I don't know what, if there's a solution to that, but it appears the way, way they've designed it. One of the lots is going to be, houses is going to be looking at the back of mine and I'm going to be looking at the back of the other. So in event, I don't know what the solution is. If this is approved, I'd appreciate some, some changes. Other than that, and I agree with Tim. This property is not going to flood. I mean, from, from where these houses are, it's probably. Thirty, forty foot drop down to where the creek is. Anyway, that's it.
Right. Thank you. Any other folks here live in the room that want to comment? All right, anybody on Zoom? No one on Zoom wants to talk. Okay, at this point, we'll go for one more round of questions from the board for staff, applicant, or the public.
This is Kelly Rast. I have a question for clarification since it was brought up. Since we have used the phrase, the character of the neighborhood. What defines when we're looking at a neighborhood since that was kind of a good thing that he brought up? So if we're looking, is there a kind of a general mile radius or do we just kind of look at the one street? Because if the character of the neighborhood is then very kind of obsolete.
Like just, then when you look at the character of an area, you're, you're, you're taking a look at adjacent properties. You know, north, south around it, whether it, you know, you could have a more tighter neighborhood. Where maybe there's more lots or something a little bit more spread out. It's, it's very subject, you know, subjective when you're looking from one area to another.
Okay.
So I'm looking at it from this point of view, I'm looking at it. So these properties are all rural. And we're going, the applicant has requested a rural zoning district. Even without rezoning this to a planned rural, he could still develop this with four lots. And get four ten nominal acre lots and would comply with the zoning ordinance. And it would still be rural, large lot development. And that's still within character of large lot develop, you know, the large lot development out in the, in the Salisbury area.
Okay, and Kelly Rast again. So in this instance, we're looking at the character of the neighborhood of basically just the surrounding area, which is kind of correct. There are excessively large lots. Twenty, thirty, forty, sixty. So maybe there should be a little bit more of a happy medium. If, like what you just said, maybe only four lots maximum.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is Fred Winger. The, the street being put in, the Rosewood Street. What was the thought process either from planning?
The rural comprehensive plan makes statements to having connectivity. So we are trying to plan not for next year, but we're thinking twenty, thirty years down the road. We don't know what's going to happen to development out there. And so we're trying to think ahead. And think, how can we create connectivity and between different neighborhoods? We don't know what could happen with Jim's property in twenty years and. He may decide to sell it to a developer and they may want to split it off and create something similar to what Mr. Big Elfer is proposing today. And we want to be able to have that connectivity. It's not ideal to have a bunch of properties with just big cul-de-sacs. When you just have cul-de-sac after cul-de-sac after cul-de-sac. So we're trying to, we're trying to have, you know, comply with also what the comprehensive plan is laying out. To have some sort of connectivity, maybe create some walkability for neighbors to be able to walk around and have a off of Knoll. And be able to create some safety.
This is Kelly Rast. So, sorry. Is there a way to just put like an easement? Because I think even like my property. There, if it's pulled up on the plat, it does show like my property and, and our neighbor's property. It actually shows a built in that, one, if we wanted to divide our property, it was allowed. But two, that if a road ever wanted to go through the back, that was predetermined to happen, even though. There's nothing there right now that exists like road. So is there, well, I mean, I'm just kind of remembering off of looking at our plat, our property. And I'm in the same area.
Let me find the final plat. It's a little cleaner here.
Like can you designate an area but not necessarily put it in so that, because like you said, you know, you know what's going to happen in twenty years, but. The property owners know that that is a possibility. But until that possibility actually comes up, there's no need to do it at this point.
Right. So to be able to comply with these zoning regulations, we also have to look at lot depth to lot width ratio. So this lot one is very, when you look at it, is very linear. And if they were taking a drive off of one hundred and eighty eighth street, that lot would not comply with the lot depth, the lot width ratio. It has to be lot depth of like three to one to four to, or to four to one. And not less than one to one, where this would be a one to four. So it wouldn't comply with the lot depth, the lot width ratio if we took a driveway off of one hundred and eighty eighth street. So there's a driveway proposed off of Rosewood. And I don't know if you can see on there, it's kind of difficult. That. Zooming in here. Right here is a temporary turnaround that the applicant has proposed. So Rosewood would actually terminate here. Until if, and this would not be paved beyond this turn, this temporary turnaround.
So are you saying their driveway would come off of Rosewood then?
The driveway would come off of this way.
So that's the purpose of having that street? So the driveway can come off of that street?
It serves two purposes. It, it serves to be able to connect or give lot one access without. Issue, you know, having a deviation to lot depth, a lot width ratio. And it also serves to provide connectivity if that lot to the north is ever developed.
This is Sean Pendley, planning staff. I'll elaborate on that too. As Michelle indicated, the, the lot layout has to be determined now because this is a preliminary and a final plat. So really there can't be a, you know, something that's kind of more open and open ended and allowed to change. It has to be set now because the property, the limits of the property have to be set and all right of way needs to be. Dedicated with the plat. So if there's any remaining right of way, it has to be shown on a plat. It doesn't have to be built, so.
That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, it's shown but not built.
Right, that's right. Right of way will be shown because otherwise it will never happen. So it would never get dedicated in there. Then we get the gap and it'll never be, there's never a future connection because those properties likely would never. Agree to dedicating right of way on their own property. So it has to be set now. That then leaves the option in the future for that to be developed if and when the property to the north wherever requested for subdivision. Of course, it doesn't have to happen if the owner doesn't want it developed. They can leave it as is. The road will stop, it'll terminate though at that temporary turnaround. Which is indicated on the plat. So it won't actually stub out and go all the way to the property.
Okay, Kelly Rast again. So, but what if we, if we said we don't want that road? Does that lot have a driveway? Where's the other alternative for the driveway?
Sean Pendley, planning. I think without a street, they could get a driveway off of one hundred and, what is that, one hundred and ninety? And they could theoretically get a driveway. However. There has to be a street because it, I think for purposes of connectivity, because again, I, it's. There may be a question of the front yard. I don't know if Michelle has others.
I was getting ready.
For the front yard. There's going to be a question about that for, if you don't have something dividing that, those two lots, lots one and two. It could be a problem with lot width, the depth, front, front yard.
It just seems like, Kelly Rast, again, there, there's a, a need for this street. I mean, I understand the connectivity part, but. A connectivity part in other lots can be shown on a plat but not necessarily developed. But for this purpose, it has to be, that road has to go in, is what you're kind of saying.
We have to at least show it as being dedicated. It doesn't necessarily need to be built, but be dedicated.
Has to go at least halfway.
Well, yeah, for this purpose, they would have to at least construct it about halfway, correct?
Right. Well, that's what I'm talking about. So that has not been, so that road has to be built halfway no matter what. For the purposes of lot one.
Correct. Now, if the Rosewood Street would go away, the front yard for lot one would be one hundred and eighty eighth street. It would not comply with the lot depth, lot width ratio and a plat exception would need to be approved. Because it would not comply with subdivision standards.
Gotcha. I just feel like the presentation did not present that this road is a must in order for lot one to have an effective driveway. And I think that's a very important point.
Emily Coleman, on the Overland Park Comprehensive Plan, it shows that area as rural policy area. Can you elaborate on what that means exactly?
It's similar to the rural policy area that we show on our Blue Valley Plan. The city of Overland Park, basically, you know, it looks like what they did when they did their future land use plan was take a look at what the Blue Valley area plan is. And they, they included what the area plan is into their comprehensive plan. So their rural policy area is similar to the standards of the rural policy area, the Blue Valley Plan, which is the low density. One lot per, or one lot per ten acre type of development.
Thank you.
Michelle, this is Fred Winger. If the applicant wanted to do. The four lots, could they keep the RUR? Would they not need to rezone?
That's correct. Under the RUR district, they could do ten nominal acres. And do four lots.
Oh, sorry. So again, Fred Winger, page eight, as I look at RUR to the north, RUR to the west, RUR to the south. Again, RUR to the south, RUR to the south. What was staff's rationale for? Not just saying, we'll keep it RUR and you can. Develop your plan according to RUR?
The applicant initially came in wanting to do three to five acre lots and.
I'm sorry, could you, what was that again?
The applicant initially came in with a proposal about four, five months ago, wanting three to five acre lots, which was not in keeping with the comprehensive plan of the low density. Development of this area. The PRUR still is rural in nature. The uses in the rural district and the planned rural district are, are the same. This just allows that bonus slot for any lots over thirty acres. The PRUR zoning allows for every thirty acres, a developer can get a bonus lot. And also adds a little flexibility in lot size in case there is somebody who may not want a full ten acres, but they want to live out here. Gives them maybe a little flexibility to. Provided to them.
Sean Pendley, planning staff. I'll add to that too, to note that for this subject property, part of the other reason for the PRUR, this planned rural zoning is. To allow that flexibility for the bonus lot, as Michelle mentioned, but also for unique situations. In this case, you have virtually about a third of the overall site that is occupied by floodway or a future stream buffer. That effectively renders it undevelopable. So really they could never get a true RUR ten acre, you know, four ten acre lots. That couldn't happen. But for that reason, that's why we have the PRUR zoning that allows that flexibility of the lot and development. It's still relatively low density, you know, five acres in this total area is still relatively low. Some of these lots are still ten acres, but some are a little bit less than that. And it's because of the floodway.
Thank you. Dan Foyle, how long have they owned the property that they bought?
I believe I purchased it within the last six months.
So I assume it was floodplain when they bought it then?
That's correct. The floodplain map, I believe, was two thousand and eight. I can check real quick. I've got it in the staff report.
So Dan Foyle, so the RN one to the east is not even visible for that lot because of the railroad tracks and the trees and all that stuff, correct?
Yeah, it's pretty well buffered.
Thank you.
And Mr. Foyle, just to confirm that the floodplain map was effective in two thousand and nine.
Thank you.
This is Ken Klingensmith. Will there be, I know that we touched on this, but will there be a home association that governs fences? Use of the properties, what's allowed, not allowed?
Yes, the applicant has indicated there will be a homeowners association.
And is it, is the applicant's intention to like not allow privacy fences to be put up? Keep the property more into that rural area, that environment?
I don't believe that's been determined at this time.
This is Kelly Rast. My personal opinion with. My personal opinion with, um, the character of the neighborhood and the floodplain, especially of that one back corner lot. That doesn't have lots of buildable area. And then also with the fact of having to try and, um, that you're forced to put in that extra road for driveways. I'd like to see this land utilized more in a three acre. Divided up into three acres, four max. So I don't think I'm.
I mean parcels.
Parcels, sorry, yeah. What are the correct roads? Three to four parcels. So I'm going to be a no with the five parcels. It's not in. Character of the neighborhood.
So we're kind of getting into the discussion thing here. Does anybody have any other, at the time before we used to start our continuing discussion, any other questions? We can still reopen that, but so, okay, so other discussion along the board?
Emily Coleman, I have no objections to the plan as it was presented.
Dennis?
This is Ken, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
Now, this, this is Ken. This, um, the concern I have with this is we're kind of dropping this in the middle of. Very large plotted areas and we're putting in a five lot with roads that show kind of for expansion of what's kind of future to be set. And it's not really designed for what you have in that area around all. I do like the fact that it's residential because the R U R, you know, has concerns about what you can put and do in those R U R. We were dealing with that on other topics. But this to me is putting a subdivision in the middle of an area that isn't currently subdivision environment. And I get there's future development, but, uh, I think this is still a little too tight and not. In, is not consistent with what's around it.
This is Dan Foil, I agree with you, Ken. And I, the, I think that road going to the north there is a big assumption on future development on the part of the county. And, and, and I drive by this every day almost and it's, in my personal opinion, not a fit and I'd. For that area.
This is John Lloyd, I, I get some of the concerns. I, I do know that, that, that this part of the county is, it is fraught with, with narrow 40s and, and narrow 80s. And they're not divisible if you can't get, I mean, you gotta have the street down the middle. You know? I think, uh, you know, we have been, we just recently approved two of these. One on Antioch, south of 199th. Those lot sizes are four to six acres with a floodplain across the back. And then the, uh, on 199th between Antioch and Schweitzer. We approved one that will go up to 28 lots and go from, I think, four to 11 acres. And it's got a similar, it's got a, it's got a long drive with a J hook and a cul-de-sac in it. So, um, I just, the, the geometry and the depth to width thing makes it tough. You know, I mean, you, you would like to, you would like to then, you know, do the math and say, gosh, you know, two 20 acre lots would fit the. Would fit the character if you just did the math, but then you've got something that's too narrow and too, and too deep.
Miss Kelly Rast, I don't think it fits the character of the neighborhood though, that's the difference.
No, I'm saying if you said 20 acres would, if you just did the math and said two 20 acres, but you can't. You, you, the geometry that you're locked into with the depth to width ratios, ratios and the 48 and a narrow 40. Is, makes it the outcome of something like this almost inevitable.
This is Ken, I'd also, I kind of also appreciate your comments about what's happening on the, uh, west side of 69 Highway. And the areas over there where we bought Overland Park. I just, I don't necessarily see that as a comparison to this, this project.
Yeah, I think what, the, the ones I'm talking about are as close to Overland Park as this is, I think, Ken, at least one of them.
Okay. Any other discussion? Questions? Any other?
John, this is Ken, uh, Chairman, I would recommend a roll call on the vote.
I'm sorry?
I would recommend a roll call on the voting.
Hey, well, if we get to a motion, we'll, uh, we'll do that.
Emily Coleman, I move to approve the rezoning of 40 acres from rural district to planned rural district. A preliminary plot including a minimum infrastructure waiver to not install dry stewers. And final plot for five residential lots located northeast of 191st Street and Noll Avenue to be known as the Estates of Shadow Woods.
This is John Lloyd, I'll second. Here, you want to do a roll call vote, please?
Dan Foil?
No.
John Lloyd?
Aye.
Kelly Rast?
No.
Ken's Klingensmith on Zoom?
No.
Fred Winger?
No.
Dennis Boland?
Yes.
And Emily Coleman?
Yes.
We have one, two, three, four noes and three yes.
Do I get the tiebreaker? Yeah, what, what do we do?
So I think at this point, you either entertain a different motion or, uh, go forward with a, a recommendation for not.
It doesn't get recommended because it didn't pass, okay? Didn't have a majority, so, okay? Does anybody want to offer a, another motion? I don't think I see another motion, so this is not going to be recommended up in its current state. So the applicant can take another look at their options and geometries and get with staff and take another run at it. Sean, you want to add anything?
Uh, just to note, if there was, um, you know, if the applicant did not want to revise this, I think, you know, at some point, this recommendation could be forwarded to the B O C C. I think, um, something I guess we will have to look at to see, that's, uh, it could certainly move forward without a, a recommendation for approval. But I guess we'll leave it to the applicant at this time if they're willing to consider that.
Okay.
If not, essentially they're.
Can you, Kelly Rast, can you explain that? How does that work? So what's the point of us voting if you're, if it just gets overridden? So can you explain that process?
I'm not saying that it would be overridden. I'm saying if there's a, a request by the applicant to consider this, it, there has to be some action by the, the, some recommendation from the zoning board. So if the applicant says that they're not going to revise anything, it can't effectively end in a stalemate. There has to be some recommendation. So that, the applicant would have the opportunity to present this to the B O C C. So there's be some recommendation forwarded to the zoning, the B O C C.
Emily Coleman, there's a, as appeals board, isn't there? That, no, okay.
Yeah, there's a Board of Zoning Appeals, but I don't think that would apply in this case. And I, I think, um, this is really, I guess a question at this point, I would think we'd want to hear from the applicant as to what they would be willing to consider. If they're willing to consider any other alternatives, might be worth asking that. And again, if not, then there could be another motion recommended by the zoning board.
So.
If there's a majority, I think at this point, there's not a recommendation for approval.
Right.
So that, that could either be counted as.
Um, Mr. Chairman, could I clarify? What was the vote that we just voted on? What, can you give me the? No, so it was four to three against, so we, the recommend.
I said tie, that was my mistake.
Okay, so the recommendation that we're sending up is we're not supporting this. We voted it.
Not a tie.
There's not a tie, we voted it down.
That's right, I never said there was a tie.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There's a not, there is not a recommendation for approval. Okay, so we can go forward if. But Miss, I asked, there would be another motion, if the, if the majority, if there's a, a motion for denial, that could, we could consider that. If not, it would be, yeah, I guess it's up to the applicant if they want to revise this. If not, they'll go forward with a recommendation for denial, with the request from the zoning board. So I think the zoning board at that point would consider, is there a motion for denial?
Okay, that, this is Fred Winger, thank you for that clarification. I think there's probably some confusion. So, Mr. Chairman, would you be open to another motion? Sure. So I would move that we deny rezoning 40 acres in rural district, R U R to the planned district. P R U R, a preliminary plat including the minimum infrastructure waiver, not to install sewers, a final plat of five residential lots located in the northeast. 191st Street and all to be known as the Estates of Shadow Woods.
Dan Foil, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sure, you want to do a roll call vote again for the motion to deny the recommendation?
Motion to deny, Dan Foil?
I, yes, aye.
John Lloyd?
Nay.
Kelly Rast?
Aye.
Ken Klingensmith on Zoom?
Aye.
Fred Winger?
Aye.
Dennis Boland? And Emily Coleman?
No.
To deny, we have one, two, three, four to three.
Okay, we have a motion to deny that's passed four to three.
Thank you, this is, um, in another option, I guess, uh, this is another, a note that we'll have for the record. That initial motion, uh, to recommend approval failed. And there is that option for a failure to approve. So this will go forward as, um, with the recommendation for denial. The vote of four to three to the Board of County Commissioners. And this again, will be considered by the Board of County Commissioners at the June 30th meeting at 9:00 AM. At that time, the board can consider that if there is, uh, support for the proposal as submitted, it can be remanded back to the board. But if the board, uh, agrees with the, the zoning board, this, uh, motion would fail for rezoning.
Okay.
Emily Coleman, it would be remanded back to this board?
It could be remanded back to this board if the board, if the B O C C chooses to, uh, request the board to consider, uh, changes. Or a possible reconsideration of this application.
Would it be possible that they would remand it back without changes?
I think if the, I think if the majority of the board agree with the zoning board, they would just deny this. They would not remand it back. If the board wanted the zone, if the B O C C wants the zoning board to consider other options, the applicant to consider, the applicant could consider changes. They could remand it back with specific directions for the zoning board to consider. And they would provide those requests for consideration.
Chairman, just a clarification, Jay Leib to the Planning Department. This item will be heard before the B O C C at 9:30 AM on June 30th in this building.
Thank you. Right. That is it for the items of the business before the board. Have any other business? Okay, we get a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, before we adjourn, is there a way that, um, comments that are in chat? Since we're going to the virtual format, we don't have a mouse to look at what comments were made. Or, or who's participating in the meeting?
There's not, so we can, we might be able to get the participants up, but chatting isn't permitted.
Okay, so the people that are.
They have to make up, yeah, that's, yeah, those are not public comments, correct?
That is correct, Sean Penley, planning staff. The chat function is not enabled in our virtual meetings. So we do not capture the chat discussion. I, and I don't think actually the public is allowed to chat.
Yeah, that's, that the only thing they can do is, yeah, the only thing they can do is raise their hand.
The, and this is, Ken, the only items in chat are staff direction on when to speak, what to do about your computer. It's all technical support issues that if you see a number there, that's from staff.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Right, how about that motion?
A move to adjourn.
Emily Coleman, I second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
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 Until July 6th. This room?